The main of the common council for October 29th, 2019 is now in session. Please rise. I would like to present this specifically by the United States of America and through the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Can someone introduce and second the reception of a call of the meeting and place it on file? And then the introduction in a second. Iran and Murad. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Councilman, I'm gonna go with the first resolution, I mean, I'm sorry, the last resolution first so we can get that done before the longer discussion. This is a resolution authorizing an application to Enterprise Community Partners for funding to address displacement in the city of Hudson. You will send the attached document that explains what the application is for. And the proposal outlines what it addresses. It's being done by Rebecca Wolf on her own, and one of the things she needs is a letter of support from the council. Rebecca, would you like to explain briefly what this grant seeks?
Sure. I'm Rebecca Wolf, I'm on the first floor. And this is a grant from the Attorney General's office. It's from the Anti-Displacement Learning Network. So it's a three-phase grant that would provide, it goes to 10 cities in New York State and provides basically a framework and financial support for learning and sharing about strategies to combat displacement in the city. So it's peer-to-peer network, and it includes elected officials, stakeholders in the community, and community partners. So it brings together a project team that is composed of those kinds of people. And if we were to get the grant, the first and second phases basically are to identify strategies and select a strategy. And then we would be able to apply for the third phase, which would be funding to actually do the thing, do the strategy. So that's what it is.
Thank you. Members of the council, any questions? Irene.
My understanding is it has to be filed in two days on the Thursday.
Correct. That's why I added the fifth and that's me.
So do you have the application in the form with all the data as you will submit it, and can you provide it to the council?
Yeah, it's still a draft, but it's pretty close to being done. I've been assisted in it by a woman named Sarah Black, who used to live in Hudson, is a geographer and has been just putting together data using the available data that's already available to everybody in the studies that have been done since, there's one from 2002, one from 2012, one from 2017. And so yeah, I can definitely show you where it stands.
Okay, I certainly support the work that Enterprise intends to perform, but it seems like the application will be a thumbnail sketch, if you will, using data of how things are in Hudson. And it would be nice, I think, as a council to see it before the end.
May I point out that, I'm sorry, most of my applications don't give us their final application of the way.
No, I do understand that, but like I said, this is, it seems to me from what I've read of what the application has to contain, I just think it would have been good if we do ahead of time and we'll know in the next day or something, or tomorrow, I would assume, right?
No, what?
That what the submission will look like.
Yes, Thursday at 5:00 p.m. So yeah, I have just been working on it and, you know, I'm sure, and I mean, I'd gone back and forth with the mayor's office about involving the city in producing the grant. And so, and up to this point, it's just been, you know, just me and Sarah. But I do, also, the application requires letters of support from community partners. And I have, if you want to hear the list of letters of support that are already attached to it, I'm happy to.
Not for me, that'd be fine, to come with the rest of it.
Sure. Okay, I'll just read that into the minutes or whatever this is. The CEDC, HHA, Habitat for Humanity, SPK, Antonio Delgado's office, DeeDee Barrett's office, DSS, and Galvin Foundation. There's also a letter coming from BUCO, which many of you know as the affordable housing developer in the region.
Any other questions? Can I have an introduction in a second? John, come on. Andrew will not be with us tonight. He has composed all these resolutions. Can I have a roll call vote?
I think this is a great idea. Rebecca, thank you for working on this. Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hallarin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
I agree with Rebecca. I think keeping your feet wet real quick, so congratulations, and aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Bolo.
Aye.
President DiPietro.
You have your letter. Okay, now, the main event. We've been, as a council, sent quite a bit of information about the proposals in front of us. The first one is a resolution allowing, determining that the repairs to be performed by the Hudson Housing Authority, actually, shouldn't that come second? We'll go ahead with it. Require no environmental review under NIPA, NIPA which is, the National Environmental Policy Act. This, of course, is something they need to proceed, it's been vetted by Andy.
While we don't do each, whereas the board is standing to ask questions.
Okay, let's do that. The Hudson Housing Authority currently operates public housing on certain real property located at 41 North Second Street in the city of Hudson. Whereas the Board of Commissioners for the Authority, also known as the Board, determined to convert the portfolio of public housing units to Section 8 project-based units under the Rental Assistant Demonstration Program, very known as RAG, of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And whereas, as part of its RAG conversion, the Authority is determined to perform certain repairs, upgrades, and capital replacements to the improvements located on the property. Whereas, by Resolution Number 471 dated October 9th, 2019, the Board determined that the project is a Type 2 action pursuant to 6 NYCR and that no environmental review is required. Whereas pursuant to 24 CFR Section 58.2 and 58.4, the Common Council of the City of Hudson is the "responsible entity," unquote, primarily responsible for environmental review, decision-making, and action that would otherwise apply to HUD, Housing and Urban Development, under the National Environmental Policy Act, NIPA, and the regulations promulgated by HUD thererunder. And whereas, the project qualifies as a categorical exclusion as defined in the regulations promulgated by HUD under NIPA. Now therefore, be it resolved that based upon review of the project, the Common Council hereby determines that the project as described above is qualified as a categorical exclusion pursuant to 24 CFR Section 58.3, and that no environmental review is required pursuant to NIPA. And be it further resolved that each of the mayor or common council president of the city, each an authorized officer, be and each of them hereby is singly or jointly authorized, empowered, and directed in the name and on behalf of the city to take all actions and to execute and deliver any and all documents which they, in the exercise of their reasonable discretion, deem necessary, advisable, or appropriate to effect the aforementioned actions and resolutions without further authority or approval by the Common Council of the City. And be it further resolved that all of the foregoing resolutions are in further, I'm sorry, are in furtherance of the purposes of the city. Do I have an introduction in a second? John? Tiffany. A roll call vote, please.
I'm the Buian.
Can we just ask a couple of questions? These resolutions are new from what we were sent a week ago, so this is.
They were.
I never sent a resolution.
These weren't sent, these are new.
Right.
Tonight, I mean, I'm saying.
Okay, then we probably should go back a second and follow that rule about resolutions that haven't been presented before, although that's kind of the purpose of a special meeting. Oh, General Fin, oh, okay, maybe we don't have to do that. Okay. Yes, these are revised resolutions.
Okay, so I guess, so this is the first time I'm seeing this resolution. The funding is coming on a federal level, not a state level, so.
We're just talking about the Seeker, this is a NIPA.
Well, these are the first time I'm seeing these, trying to understand the difference between them. Maybe we can understand the difference between us rather than.
You'd rather wait and not vote yet on the first resolution?
Well, we have questions, so we want to hear the questions first before.
On the first resolution? Okay, let's hear them. Who has a question?
I'm just, I need a minute to read the resolution under this.
What was the difference?
Irene.
On the RAG conversion, it seems like, and only on the basis of what I've been able to read, I'm not, you know.
I would just say if we, before we even talk.
Hold on, hold on, let Irene finish. Are we talking about just this resolution now, Irene, or you?
I thought we had reverted to the RAG.
No, I think we're going to just.
We're still on Seeker.
Yes.
I go ahead.
We're talking about the NIPA, the environmental, federal environmental protection clause is about the bill that we'll talk about. All right.
Any other questions?
So the project is, so the project that is described above is qualified as a categorical exclusion pursuant to 24, and that no environmental review is required pursuant to.
This is, these are about borrowing money, essentially, so any of the environmental reviews is about borrowing, obviously there aren't going to be any because it's about loan type, is super correct.
Darren, we're joined, Darren Hubble, you want to identify yourself?
Yeah, Dan Hubble of White Menosha. And I am council for the Housing Authority for the RAG conversion. We've got Tim Matice, who's our executive director here, and also Mike Bruno, who is our corporation council for the Housing Authority. So what, there's two resolutions before you check. The first is a resolution for NIPA. So NIPA is the environmental review that HUD requires every housing authority goes through when they're doing a RAG conversion. NIPA is not all that unlike Seeker, I think Seeker's probably, you guys are a little more familiar with. Under Seeker, you have Type 1, Type 2 actions, and so this action is already found to be a Type 2 action under Seeker by the Board. The Board is its own, is a public entity as well, and it is subject to Seeker, and so as lead agency, made determination that it was a Type 2 action. Now, just like under Seeker, you have Type 2 actions which are repairs, replacements of existing infrastructure, not expanding, not, so like what we're talking about here, we talked about the project, what we're talking about here is mainly replacing the elevator, elevator desperately needs to be replaced, it's number one, bringing some units that have been offline, bringing those units back up online, and making other improved improvements to the existing building, the existing Bliss Tower, you know, the low-rise unit. So we're not talking about putting up new buildings, that would be, arguably be a Type 1 action, we're not talking about doing any disturbance at all of existing, you know, of existing sites, so this is just.
Do you have a list with you, because we did request with the.
Yep, and that was provided, that was provided to you in the spreadsheet that you guys have. There's, that is the, what's called the capital needs assessment, and that breaks it down over 20 years as to improvements that the Housing Authority will be making. And so these improvements that the Housing Authority is making are in that sheet, they're not going to be doing all 20 years' work, they're going to be doing what, first few, yeah, first 10 years. So that's what we're going to be doing. So that's what the project consists of. Now, as far as the NIPA Part 58 review, NIPA provides under 58.34 that those items classified as a categorical exception, a categorical exclusion, are not subject to NIPA. This project, because this is just replacement, repairs of existing infrastructure, no new construction, no additions to the site, none of that other stuff, so we're in Seeker Type 2 world, that's categorical exclusion world in NIPA.
So as part of the documents you submitted, they're all part of the record, and just to answer Tiffany's concern, you will be held responsible for doing exactly what's in that outline of repairs and renovations.
Exactly, so when we do the, when we do the RAG conversion, there is a contract to complete the RAG conversion. HUD has different silos, different programs. Right now, we are in the public housing unit side, Section 9 side. They're going to take HHA and move into the Section 8 side. Now, we understand Section 8 to be in, and HHA administers a Section 8 program within the city of Hudson, we understand to get a voucher, you go to wherever you can find a landlord that'll take your voucher. These are project-based vouchers, so these vouchers are attached to the units themselves. So existing residents will not be displaced, they're going to stay right in those units, they'll get a project-based voucher, which gives them, attaches to that unit. And then what essentially happens is, is the Housing Authority will enter into a contract with HUD, and as part of that contract, we have to perform these repairs.
So with the rehabilitation, as you mentioned, of the low-rise, where would you be placing the tenants that still remain in the low-rise?
The low-rise units that we're specifically targeting are those units that are currently offline.
And about the rest of them?
There's no planned rehab for those particular units, just the offline units are the units that we're targeting with the funding or the loan they're seeking to secure as part of the RAG conversion. So there are 25 units offline, as Dan mentioned, and those are the units that we're targeting for rehab to get those back online.
So that's inside Bliss and the low-rise?
That's correct.
And with remaining as a Section 8 voucher program with the apartments, everything will remain as public housing status, the same as far as utilities included, rent by your income, still considered low income?
Yes, nothing changes, absolutely nothing changes, and I think the decision that the Board made was an important decision as far as keeping control of the public housing authority assets and not getting into a partnership situation or entity at this time.
So for the record, Bliss Towers will remain as 100% ownership to the Hudson Housing Authority?
That's correct, absolutely, 100%.
100%?
100%, absolutely, there will be no other controlling entity involved in the Housing Authority.
I just want to add one clarification to that, because what Tim's saying is true, but the clarification is, as part of our financing, the private financing that we're doing with Community Preservation Corp., they're going to require us to form a special purpose entity, which is called an HDFC, a Housing Development Fund Company. That entity will be 100% owned by the authority, by the Housing Authority, but I just don't want you someday, you look at public records and you're like, who's this HDFC? The HDFC is owned 100% by the Housing Authority, the bank just requires a special purpose entity to have the real estate that they do the work for.
How do we see that?
And we're more than happy, and we're more than happy to provide the documentation, if you want, showing that the Housing Authority maintains ownership of that. So is that a way for the Housing Authority to borrow in the future by using that? For that project.
I didn't see that list that you sent us to do of all the repairs that we were doing. Is the playground included in those repairs? Both playgrounds?
I'm not sure.
Been a very long time.
I'm not sure, but certainly as part of the 20-year workbook which outlines the maintenance and construction that we'll be performing, there is also funding that will go into a dedicated capital reserve account that will be able to do projects and improvements outside of that 20-year workbook.
And now we're down to like five years?
Yeah, 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 so the playground, so the answer to your question is yes, the playground could be part of that, even though it's not listed in that work plan, it could be a project that we undertake, because we'll have funding to do that.
What?
Questions, come on.
Does this change how the appointments are made on the Board? Because I know the city gets a lot of, a certain amount of appointments.
No, no, the relationship between the Housing Authority and the city will not, will not change, we're not changing the organizational structure, it'll stay the same.
Jennifer?
Under pilots, how much did the city agree with the fee in 1966 when it was recently engaged?
What was the pilot fee to the city, to the Housing Authority? I don't know the answer to that question. I do know we pay approximately a little over $30,000 a year to the city now under the current pilot agreement, and that.
And would that fee change under new pilot, and if not, why not?
It could change, absolutely, because the pilot is based on a formula. So that formula, depending on the factors, could affect the amount of that pilot, whether it may go up and down.
But the formula can't change, HUD requires that, the formula can't change, HUD requires that formula.
Any negatives, please?
To the, to the RAG conversion?
Yeah.
Well, you know, as stewards of the Housing Authority, it's the Board's responsibility, it's my responsibility to see into the future and look at trends. And what we're seeing is a lot of challenges down the road for housing authorities in general. There's reduced funding, there's going to be lack of funding, you know, there's just a high level of regulatory and bureaucratic guidelines that make the process complicated and inefficient. So we're looking to secure affordable housing in the city of Hudson for really, for decades to come by repositioning its assets, and really that's what RAG is doing, it's allowing us to reposition our assets. And we do that through the capitalization of our financial structure. And what we're doing is, is that we currently, the financial structure the way it is now, we rely solely on the agency's equity to run the management, the operation, and do the capital improvements, and that puts a significant strain on the organization, especially when there's a reduction in funding from HUD. So what we're trying to do is introduce debt into the equation, so we have a more even debt-to-equity ratio, so we take the stress off of the organization, so we make it a little bit more sustainable long-term. So that's really kind of the overarching goal of why we're doing a RAG conversion, and just being able to create more sustainability, long-term sustainability for the Housing Authority based on the trends that we're seeing coming down the road.
Do you want council questions first? Irene?
So with what you just described, do you see the city's fiduciary responsibility changing? I don't know what it is today, I'm not familiar with how much oversight the city has into how the authority is funded, but going forward, some of what I've read and had some help with understanding indicates that certain loans, like from New York State to the Housing Authority, should those default or not be paid, the city would be liable for those. So I'm just wondering how, if at all, and I think it will change somehow, but I think it's something as a council we might want to look.
It is, but I think we're looking at, that's looking too far ahead in terms of these resolutions.
Just to assure you, and to answer your question, the proposal that we're putting forward, the loan amount that we're securing, is all going through a very rigorous process of underwriting by the U.S. Department of HUD. And they will not sign off on that until they are comfortable with all the numbers. And we're actually going through that process now, we're going through that underwriting process where HUD is looking at the pro forma, they're looking at all the numbers, and they're asking us obviously a number of questions, and making sure that when they approve this deal, that there is 100% certainty that there will be no default, and there will be no liability on the city, that we'll be able to collateralize that debt over the 20 years. And we've proven that we can. And we've proven that we can and with quite a bit of surplus cash annually, much more than what, how we're operating now.
Thank you. I think it is important that we understand now when we vote.
No, I'm not saying that. Don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that. But the point is, go ahead, Dan.
I just wanted to clarify that. The financing coming in, intended financing coming in is private financing from Community Preservation Corp. They're not the state, they're not the federal government. They are a private financier that does these loans to housing authorities across New York State. And I provided this in the email to you earlier today, that under the public housing law, outside of loans from the state, you're not, as I read the law, not your council, but as I read the law, you're not obligated to pay anything on a private loan with CPC unless if you expressly assume that you're being guaranteed, and we don't have any indication that's going to be the case.
And just one more question. Would the council have to approve if at some point in the future it was necessary for the Housing Authority to ask for a loan from the state?
My reading, again, I'm not your attorney.
Right.
He's not here. Our reading of the, of the public housing law is that generally speaking, any project of the authority would require city council approval. Private financing, I'm not sure private financing would require your approval, but I certainly would think that if the city is going to be making loan, if the state's going to be making loans to the city, and we've had lots of conversations with the state about this affordable housing here, the state would, I'm sure would have you involved.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry. Kamal?
Just a quick question because yours do have tax exempt status, correct?
The Housing Authority is statuteually exempt from real property taxes under the law.
Okay, so we're moving forward on, you know, working on a sidewalk district thing, which is going to affect not-for-profits paying the fee. So how does that affect you guys?
We are not a not-for-profit. We are a public authority.
So you would still be...
We are exempt from taxes under the RPTL.
But this is going to be, it's not going to be a tax. It's going to be a fee for repairs for the sidewalks.
I would have to look at the law and see how that would, how that would affect the authority. And one, just a very quick question about financing. So this entity that's being created specifically for this project that's outside of the, what was the acronym you gave it? An HDFC. Is that something you, in the future, if a new developer comes on to do a new development within the HHA, would they use that entity to borrow, as a pass-through to borrow money? Based on the municipal... Probably not, because we would not want to, you know, the authority has indicated that they want to keep the public housing units separate from any private developer. So probably what we'd do is we'd create a new HDFC, which if there's, and put that, put whatever land is being developed into that HDFC, and then the flow chart for it's a little crazy, but essentially the HDFC would lease to the development entity.
Quentin? Oh, is there more? I thought there was no more council questions. Quentin?
Quentin Cross, 32 North Fifth Street. My question is if, for some reason, you wanted to convert to privatized ties Rad, where, you know, 60% ownership or what have you, the majority would go to a private, you know, private entity or what have you, would you need common council approval for that? Or if you, or can you do that on your own without council approval?
The question is if you, if we are...
Right now, you're saying you're going public, if you're going to use, it's going to be 100% owned by Hudson Housing Authority, but Rad traditionally, you know...
If we were going to bring in developer to do a full rehabilitation of the site?
Not that side, or any additional, any pieces where...
Any project that, any, any development project that, as we read the law, any development project at some point needs to be approved by the city.
The development project, what about the privatization?
That would be part of the development project.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Got questions? Can we answer the next one?
That was comprehensive, but you can continue with, should we? Vote on the first one or...
We're just...
Let me talk, the easy one. Okay, I guess we'll vote on it.
Alvin Bouillen.
Aye.
Goriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenbach.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Crescenti Pedro.
No vote. So we get to the other resolution, which is the part of the matter. It's only been slightly revised, and let me tell you, most of the revisions were put forth by Aldrin Goriga in hopes that, or in, to guarantee pretty much everything we've been told about the Rad conversion. Is that, is that true?
That is correct, and I just have a couple of questions.
Sure. Okay, let's start with the introduction in a second. Tiffany and Kamal. Okay, discussion is open too.
I don't know if you want to start breaking it down, please.
Oh, it's a lot to read.
Could I actually ask Tiffany what changes you made first? Is that all right?
Sure.
I think I'd love to hear what you...
Well, the changes I made, I pretty much just asked the questions earlier, just now, just to confirm everything. So the changes was, and that's why I wanted to double check that's actually in here, that they would have 100% ownership. The changes is that the council, which is on the first page, I believe, that the, the common council supports the rehabilitation of Bliss Towers, but is opposed to privatization...
Yep. It's the 2234...
Of the state facility?
Whereas.
Yes, the second, up, under whereas. And also, it's also added the third whereas ups, where it says the authority will further remain in compliance with tenant protections because I was told by our city attorney that this was not included. So it is included. I know we requested at our last meeting. So the authority will, will further remain in compliance with tenant protections as outlined under joint housing, PIH notice with these sections, and will make further, and make further make sure that the tenants are protected by ensuring after the rehabilitation that all fire exits are open and available to tenants. And with that said, I spoke to Andy, and with this schedule and everything, it was a bit of a rush. Excuse me. Excuse me.
I'm sorry, these are the first time we've seen these, these changes. So a word.
That's fine. I spoke with Tim Matisse, and I spoke with Randall Martin, particularly about the fire exits. Yes. And we agreed on having the main exit of the elevator open, correct?
Yeah.
And under the rehabilitation, you would work on the other two exits, correct? Yes? As you heard, I would like to say it in there. I would like to make a motion to amend and add that the main stairwell will be open. The discussion that I had with the executive director was about changing the magnet lock and that keeps the door closed, keeps it from people entering the staircase, and changing it to something as simple as a slam lock. So it would remain that people will not be able to enter the staircase, but such in an event as a fire, an emergency, any reason, the people that live in that building have the access to exit the building without a problem, which it has been years of people have been complaining about being a fire hazard. So we agreed, correct? That the main elevator and, by the, the exit by the elevator would be open.
That's a long motion. Kimberly?
Thank you.
Can we narrow it down to, let's see?
I make a motion that we add to the third whereas now stating that the main entrance, the main elevator by the elevator, the main stairwell by the elevator will be open. Locks will be changed now.
This is on, on you.
And under the rehabilitation, the other two stairwells will be open.
So just clarify, what do you mean by open? Like the door's not physically going to be open?
Not physically open, as we discussed on the phone, that people will be able to exit.
Yes, exactly.
Not enter, but exit.
Which the one main door that you were...
The magnet lock?
Yes, the main door at the front by the elevator. That's already been...
We're talking about downstairs?
Yes, that first floor.
Yes.
So that door's already open, so if anyone goes into the stairwell, they can exit out that door.
Yes.
So that's been, we're working on the other two doors.
Do the residents know or aware?
I'm not sure if they do or not. I'm not sure.
They need to be. I mean, such an event, you know, people have cases where children are bored and they may press elevator buttons, or someone may press the wrong floor, and someone is having a asthma attack. They shouldn't have to wait for an elevator when they can go downstairs.
Yep, yep. And right after our conversation, we went ahead and made that change. So at least that door is open. We're trying to figure out how to do the other ones.
Thanks.
Can I have a introduction in a second to the motion? Tiffany and Kamal. All in favor, please. Can I have a vote for that?
And give yourself a position.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, that passes. Oh, so now we're back to the resolution in general. More questions or are we ready to vote? Or what's the feeling of the council?
Just to clarify from my understanding, this isn't about the privatization of the building itself, but privatization of how you go about your capital funding. So the capital funding goes out, as opposed to just getting money from HUD, you can go out and get money from, from private investors who then get a low tax, get a tax credit for investing. And this way, you're, I would imagine, I'm assuming you're in more control of your funding than, as opposed to just depending upon how much money HUD can give you, I'm assuming.
Are you asking me what that means?
I'm assuming that's the advantage.
Yeah, and here, we are getting money not as, for this, for this project, which is these improvements that are repaired, there's really repairs that are being made to the building. The money's coming from a private lender, so it's coming in as debt, not as equity. The tax credit would come in as equity. That would, and if it comes in as equity, that would require, that would actually be a privatization, a hybrid privatization of the ownership. We're not doing that. We talked about doing it, there was an RFP that went out about doing it, there was appearances of the developer, and then the board made the decision, we're not doing that, doing a straight Rad conversion, straight debt scenario. So there is no other tax credit investor, private developer, anything like that. It is the Housing Authority doing the project. There will be a contractor, but that's going to be a typical contract or owner relationship. No ownership in the property.
Will you still receive funding from HUD?
Yeah.
There's, I think, we gave, what was that admin fee?
The section eight admin fee, the total amount?
Yeah, the total amount.
It's approximately $160,000.
And then we also get the subsidized rate.
Plus the subsidized.
Yeah, plus the subsidized rate, which actually are...
Which is actually higher than the subsidized rate that we're receiving now through the section nine program.
Does your contract, work with the contractor, you have to do prevailing wage? Now it's a profit, that's essentially profit funding, but you're still going through a public grant. The debt's private.
Maybe, maybe not. It depends on the, the level of work that's being done, and we would ask HUD for determination on that. Some of the repairs that we do don't trigger prevailing wage. However, it might trigger a HUD wage rate, which is a little bit different. So if it's a maintenance, say we're replacing cabinets and countertops, that would be more of a maintenance than a construction project. So that wouldn't trigger prevailing wage rate, that would be a HUD wage rate. So it may or may not, the, the degree of, of work may or may not trigger prevailing wage. Obviously, the elevator work would definitely trigger prevailing wage, but the rehab of the units may not.
I think that's okay. From the second whereas, the common council supports the rehabilitation of Bliss Towers, I would like to add, and playgrounds.
Can I have a motion in a second?
My motion?
I'm, sorry. All right, I meant an introduction in a second. Dwan and John. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. A roll call vote.
Alvin Bouillen.
Thank you for all this, Tiffany. Aye.
Goriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenbach.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Crescenti Pedro.
I would vote for, on this, because I'm so happy that this is going through. This means 25 units will be back online. That is creating housing in the city of Hudson. I vote yes.
Carrie.
Tiffany, and now let me thank Tiffany who, this was a long haul, and you've said this well, John Rosenbach as well, Kamal, the people who, and Dwan who are on the working committee. I think this is an amazing moment. This is, you know, we've always wanted to do something about Bliss. I think it's the first step in it. Thank you to everybody for, you know, coming back and not being scared away by the first caller.
And thank you, Tim Matisse, you know, for recognizing that it is a fire hazard, and I'll have a request if you don't mind. We noticed that in all New York State public housing authorities, they have a nice sign that says, "Welcome to," the name of their housing authority. We have a sign there, that's the rules, we understand the rules, but can we have a nice sign?
Absolutely.
That says, "Welcome to Bliss Towers."
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and one last thing. I want to thank the teenagers here who are here tonight for their assignment. You've really seen, you know, a quasihistoric meeting of the common council. So thank you for coming, and if you need a signature, I'm here. Do you want to adjourn? Oh, is there? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh. That's another resolution. Oh, I'm sorry.